Okay, the Planning and Zoning Meeting for October 16th, 2019 will now come to order. Please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ununderdog, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we take a real call, please?
Chairman Williams?
Here.
Vice Chairman Severs?
Here.
Member Spideau?
Here.
Member Bobbitt? Member Richardson?
Here.
Member Hare.
And we have, we have four, four. All right, next is Brad. Is it right to do the minutes or, okay. So next is approval of minutes for September 17th, 2019. And is this for the workshop? Is that?
That's correct.
This is working, okay. Okay, so you want us to approve the workshop here?
Yes, sir, this is a combined, uh, regular and workshop.
Okay, is there a motion? Vice Chairman Severs?
I move for approval of the minutes of September 17th, 2019, and also the minutes of October 2nd, 2019.
On the second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, you'll, you had reports that you wanted to?
Sir Chairman, we, we would ask that the agenda be rearranged to allow for the reports to be before the old business. So we have some items to discuss related to the attendance sheet and the, uh, letter that was, was discussed at your last meeting about sending to a former member. So I guess, I guess, up to the chair, or I guess the commission, if you would like to rearrange the agenda.
Can we, Chelsea, you had something you wanted to add, or, okay. All right, so let's just do this real quick, then. Can I get a motion to move the reports?
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thank you, good evening. The reason that we are conducting a workshop, a meeting this evening is in order to take formal action, formal action for the items such as the minutes and the item that we're about to discuss. If there's a motion made by this commission, then it has to happen at what's typically, what is actually called a meeting. And so where our only subject of business besides the ministerial stuff is the comp plan discussion, which will be in workshop form as, after this item is completed. So the first item of business that I would like to bring up is that I thought we would possibly have a memo from our chair going to city council. However, since I last spoke to the chair, this is news to him tonight, I have received a resignation letter from Member Chambers. He has resigned from the commission and we will miss him, but he also was running into attendance issues with his health and, of course, you know, there's a requirement in the code section 2-53, which states that any member who fails to attend three or more consecutive meetings shall waive their position on the Board of Commission that they have been appointed to. So that's the situation we were in, and he'll go out on a higher note with this resignation letter, and that will be submitted to the clerk's office for presentation to city council in lieu of the chairman's resignation letter, or, sorry, attendance memo to council. So which leads me into the next topic of discussion. When I spoke to the chair, we had a conversation about the process for sending a letter of appreciation to members who may have served some time on the Board of Commission. And what I provided to him was a letter that the clerk's office routinely sends to our former members, letting them know of the form that they need to fill out for financial disclosures and thanking them, you know, in a form letter for their service. And recently, we had Member Baker leave her service, and now today, we also have Member Chambers. And so I'll turn it over to you, Chair Williams, if you wanted to add anything specific about your request at this time.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, that's, one of the things that I find that I would, would have hoped would be more automated, but I think that anytime you spend volunteer time on a board, I think it is nice, even though it's just a letter, just for the board to at least acknowledge that. It's a simple gesture, and so I would like to formally request that we send out a letter to both Mr. Chambers and Mrs. Baker. And really, all it is, is the same as what the, um, the clerk sends out, but it's kind of from the board acknowledging that. And so if, um...
Do you need a motion?
Um, yes, that would be nice.
I move. You, those memos, we sent.
Okay. All right, so anything you'd like to add? Okay, stepped up, so. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All right.
I have one other question regarding just the tenant sheet. Member Noel Copeland doesn't appear on the tenant sheet. She's an alternate member, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, no, I guess, okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, and I do regret seeing John leave, but I can understand. He's been on the board for many, many years, and he also served as a, the school board liaison for a very long time as well, so. And on that note, is there any movement on the school board replacement?
Unfortunately, no, I don't have any information. Brad, do you?
And so there's no formal requirement? I mean, I know that years ago, there was an addition. But as long as it's not formal, great, but if you've offered it to them and they don't feel it, well, if, but you're saying it's not a formal requirement?
I believe that the school board is responsible for suggesting and naming the individual, and without that, we, we can work with them to try to find someone, but, and I think that's the case, but there hasn't been a suitable replacement. We have recently submitted an advertisement for all of our boards and commissions that have vacancies. It's tough getting volunteers these days.
It has changed.
We do appreciate your service.
I can tell you that from being on nonprofit, huh?
Can I do that?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, years ago, no.
The school board member is a non-voting member.
Yeah, years ago, it was a different game. Everybody would volunteer and, and it's just not the same anymore. Anyway, so that is it on that, and how do you want to proceed with the meeting now? Do you want to close this and then start the?
I'm gonna leave it up to you, if you'd like to do, close this and open up a workshop, or just continue this meeting as a workshop and stay at the dice, or come down to the table as you've done at the previous workshops. So that's up to you. I can accommodate however you like.
And then, Mr. Severs, Vice Chairman, you had something you wanted to bring up?
Or if we have any reports or requests, is this the appropriate time to bring them up?
I would think so, if you get your regular business out of the way before we go on to the workshop item. That's what I would request.
Board this, then. How, how do you want to proceed? Do you want to close this meeting and wrap this up and then just start a workshop?
If you have non-action items that you'd like to report and discuss with the group, that can be done at the end of the workshop. You can have an additional period for reports, but if there's something that you'd like to take action on, I'd recommend that you do it at this time of the meeting.
Okay, well, they're both non-action items, so as long as I can report them as a part of the workshop, that's fine.
It's up to the chair.
However you want to do it, I mean, it's, it's your, so we'll just bring them at the, uh, is it a workshop item, or is it a?
Well, it's a follow-up to our last meeting.
Okay, so I would say let's bring it up here, and then, um...
If I may ask, is it a follow-up to our last workshop or to our last regular meeting?
Last regular meeting.
Okay.
Right, that's why I was...
So that's why I'm asking the question.
Right, and then that way, it's, uh, at this meeting, it's more appropriate. Not like it's not appropriate for the other meeting, but, um, so if you'd like to bring it up?
Okay. As I understand it, and I have a copy of, of the agenda of the October 8th council meeting, and I'm referring to ordinance number 27, 2019 relating to retention in the area of critical concern, ordinance 27-2019. The agenda indicated Planning and Zoning Commission considered the item at their October 2nd meeting and recommended denial. As written, in addition, the Planning and Zoning Commission made a motion to amend the ordinance, as I understand it, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, at the city council at their October 8th meeting did table that item until next Tuesday night. Is that correct?
Yes.
And the purpose of the table was what?
My understanding is to allow more time for staff to analyze the conditions and that were submitted with the revised ordinance recommended by B and Z, and to be able to have a proper response in case there were questions by council at the next meeting. There just wasn't enough time to, between your last meeting and the, and the last city council meeting, so that's why it was asked for it to be tabled.
Assuming for the moment there may be a revised ordinance prepared, will the Planning and Zoning Commission have an opportunity to review it?
My understanding, if the revisions that are council considers are significantly different, or if it's a brand-new ordinance, that's, that would not be, that would be different from what was advertised, then yeah, we'd probably have to come back to you.
Okay, I, I know the agenda goes out tomorrow, and I asked at 9:55 this morning the city attorney's office, Peggy and Wanda, for a copy of any new or revised ordinance concerning the above subject and any staff report for the October 22nd council meeting. I did receive one reply from Peggy Basaka saying, as soon as the draft is available, I will forward it to you. I was hoping that the draft would be available so we could have it tonight to pass out or to look at, whether we want to take any action or not, I have no idea. I'm surprised that I didn't get a copy from somebody of a draft, even if it was a preliminary draft, because as I understand it, and I could be wrong, most of those items are public records, and that's the response I received.
I honestly don't have a good answer for you, other than that, it's probably still, the agenda's still being completed and will be published tomorrow, and we'll certainly be able to make that available to you when it's published.
Well, I, I understand that, but there, I know because of my experience, there's a tendency not to release something until council has access to it. That doesn't necessarily mean that it's not a public record prior to then if somebody asks for it. And I'm just trying to determine what's going on. I, I thought it was, since we're having a meeting, if it was going to be materially different, in fairness, to the Planning and Zoning Commission, maybe we should have had a chance to look at it. I have no idea what it contains, because the only response I get, I will probably get a copy tomorrow after this meeting. So that was the purpose of me asking for it, so I'd have it before this meeting.
Understood.
Okay. Does the city attorney's office have anything to say?
Yes, this is the first I'm hearing of your request. I did not receive your request.
Well, I sent it to Mr. Broom. He didn't communicate with you?
He did not tell me about your request.
Okay, all right. Okay. The second item I had is that I have received, and this could be a part of, I, I hand a copy of, I, I construed it as an educational material from St. John's Water Management District. Sorry. On low-impact development, which has been mentioned here before at the council level, it's been mentioned here. And I, honestly, the amount of time and money that was spent upon this retention issue, we could have adopted a low-impact development ordinance and probably addressed a lot of the concerns and issues by doing that. And as I see it, St. John's Water Management District is encouraging low-impact development. I know Mr. Rice spoke at a council meeting encouraging elimination of curb and gutter and some of the low... I think I will probably plan on bringing this up more so as a part of the comprehensive plan as well, because I think it certainly should be addressed. I think particularly relevant, as far as anything, discharges that may go into the Indian River Lagoon or within the area of critical concern, so as to retain water, recharge, not have as much destruction of a lot of the trees and the like. So I just pass this out as information at this stage.
Thank you for bringing it up. We actually are working on an ordinance that council gave us direction to, to work on. It's just a quick one, we think, right now, in our area of critical concern, we have a requirement in our code where we allow someone to get a 75% credit for putting in pervious pavement. We're proposing an ordinance, we have a draft of it right now, we're still working on that. We'll expand that to other parts of the city. I do have part of the, the next agenda item, the comp plan agenda item, an item I'd like to send, give out to you about low-impact development techniques that we currently have right now as part of our urban design manual for the downtown. And we currently encourage it for new development and redevelopment in our downtown area. That, right now, is not a requirement, we don't have specific standards. So yeah, I think your, your, your topic is, is present right now, and we'll definitely, I'll address it later.
Those are the two items I had.
Okay, Member Richardson?
Yes, since we're getting these, these reports and questions done at this time, I have a question about the backup material on council that was on the city's website. I was told that that was removed because of an ADA lawsuit. And I don't understand how that can be removed because ADA, but the ADA lawsuit has been dismissed. So will the backup?
No, sir, we, I, I'd be happy to meet with you outside of this meeting, but the short answer is no, the backup is not going to be put back up on the website, and it's because the, the backup, the support to the agenda, the 500 or 800 pages cannot be created in an ADA-accessible format on a routine basis by our city staff. And so we can produce a template for the cover of the items, but not the backup, in an ADA-compliant fashion that a screen reader could use to read the information that's posted on our city website. We are still in the process of hiring a third party to convert our budget, which is a requirement of Florida statute to be posted on our website. We're only posting the things that we can publish in an ADA-compliant fashion that meets the WCAG 2.0 standards.
So...
And our backup can't meet that level with our current staff.
If there was one item on the agenda for council, and I would like to see the backup information, I could just call the city clerk's office.
100% of the time.
Okay, and then email it to me, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Vice Chairman? You addressed the agenda, how about the, the comprehensive plan, the 2040 plan? Will that be available online?
Actually, the draft 2040 plan is available online. We have three versions of it. We've got to meet ADA requirements. In order to put a PDF in there, we had to have an ADA version, so we have a, a Word version. We also have an HTML version. We worked hard on that one. The comp plan we're working on, the current comp plan, we, we are almost done with an ADA version of that. We'll have that available back online as well. So we, the planning department has been working hard to try and do that.
All right. So I guess that, that wraps up our, our formal meeting. So I'll open this up to petitions and requests from the public present. Anybody from the public might you come up and bring anything up to the Planning and Zoning Meeting at this time? Okay. And we will adjourn then. With that, would you guys, you said you want to take a quick break?
Let's...
Yes, no?
Let's do it.
All right, so then we'll go right into the?
Workshop.
Workshop.
Is this the map you want us to use?
That's a land use map, I believe, that, I gave you two land use maps. One, the land uses that are currently in effect, and the other one was the draft one.
One was behind the other one.
I think that's what you're asking. What I saw looked like the, the current plan.
Yeah.
I have some handouts to give you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Speak to you from the podium, because I'll be referring to these. I'm not going to go through everything that's in here that I gave you, I'm just going to hide, go through it in parts. So tonight, this is just, I believe we're on number three or four of your workshops. You have one more scheduled at your next meeting. Tonight's topic, on your agenda, we have it tonight, is about infrastructure. And I was going to continue a little bit from the last meeting we had about mixed-use development. I'll, I'll talk about that, as well, you talked about the infrastructure. Sustainability, resiliency, low-impact development, area of critical concern, the recharge areas, and the Indian River Lagoon, multimodal strategic planning, and capital improvements and level of service standards. So the first, I gave you a couple of presentations. The first one I'm going to go through, and then the second one, I'm just going to highlight certain parts of it. And then I also gave you excerpts from the current, or from the, the draft comprehensive plan. It's titled Public Facilities, Goals, Objectives, and Policies. It's a large portion of the comp plan, it's actually the second half. Remember, the first half of the plan is all about land use and place making. And the second half is all about what's required by statute. All the concurrency-related facilities, infrastructure, capital improvements, planning. And I'm, I'm not going to go through all that in detail. That, again, is for you to take, review. If you have comments, questions, please, you can send them to me, or call me with them, or we can meet in person about them. Again, I'm always available, I'll make time available, as much time as, as you need, to talk about any aspect, topics you have, or that you're interested in about this comprehensive plan. The fourth item is just some excerpts from the city's downtown mixed-use zoning district urban design manual. And the excerpt I put in there is about sustainability, and that talks about low-impact development techniques. We have that currently adopted inside that urban design manual, and we implement it as part of implementing the zoning code for the downtown area. But these are only encouraged, they are not regulatory. When a developer asks for a, a request for waivers or, you know, more flexibility in code, we use these as options, why not do some of these techniques to help with stormwater? So I'll explain that in a moment. So the first thing I want to go through is the first presentation, and that is the one called Title Concurrent. It's got Titusville on the top there. So I'm just going to read briefly what, what concurrency is. Some members are very familiar with concurrency and comprehensive planning, and other members are not. So shorthand, concurrency is basically a shorthand expression for a set of land use regulations that governments are required by the full legislature to adopt to ensure that new development does not outstrip local government's ability to handle it. Together, there are seven public services known as concurrency facilities. Those are, and that's on the next page here, water facilities, potable water, sewer, stormwater, solid waste, schools, parks, and transportation. Three of them are now optional. In 2011, the legislature made them optional, but if you still have them in your comprehensive plan, you still have them in your comprehensive plan, you still implement them. Some communities have actually just removed them. And those are parks, schools, and transportation. So in other words, you do not have to have a parks, you don't have to have policies in your comprehensive plan that address level of service standards for parks, transportation, or schools. But if you keep them, if you decide to keep them in your comprehensive plan, you continue to implement them. We have decided not to take them out. However, what I will address is that we have decided to recommend changing the level of service standards for transportation and parks. And I'll explain in a moment. On the second, the bottom half of that page, that presentation, you'll see the seven concurrency-related facilities. And first one, it says water. The next one, stormwater management, sewer, transportation, solid waste collection, recreation slash open space, parks, and public schools. I put in there in red the two that we are proposing to amend as part of the draft comprehensive plan, and that is transportation and open space and parks. And so right now, we have a level of service standard for roadway capacity of level of service E for arterials and collectors. Those are the roads where most of the traffic is funneled through. Arterials on a fish road, which is a state type of road, basically, it's a level of service C. What does this mean? You got A through F. F is failing. D is pretty much sandstill, or E is standstill. And A is great. You don't have any volume on that road. You have a lot of capacity, a lot of, it could be a two-lane, it could be a four-lane or six-lane. There's hardly any traffic on that road. And that would be an A. So you want to maintain a set level of service of C, for example. What you're saying is that we design, we have a road that's designed with enough capacity on there to handle a volume at C, whatever that might be. And so every community sets a standard for their arterials, and their collector roads, and their local roads. What we are suggesting with the consultant is a change to that. Not get rid of it for arterials, but a new type of level of service standard that's more qualitative. And I'll explain in a moment when I get into the next part of the presentation. Yes, sir?
Are you saying that our current level of service is E?
That some communities do that. They have a level of service of E. Ours is...
I thought, ours used to be C was the minimum standard, I thought, pre-2011.
Currently, it's E.
So just, if having it at E, might, I mean, E is failing. It is failing. And so that's, I'm just saying that what is the purpose of having a level of standard if you have a failing threshold?
I would ask it this way.
It was brought up years ago to option to take it out. We said, nope, it's Titusville. We want to leave it in. And we did, but I didn't realize that we put it at E.
Right. Our arterials and collectors that are not fish are basically E, and anything other above that by the state is a C. Yes, that's correct. A C, that fish would be 95, basically. So our other ones are E. That's not failing. It's kind of close to failing. And F, basically, is you have more volume than you even have capacity, basically. It just...
The idea that I had in the past was that the reason why we had these different levels was say, okay, you got to do something, got to do something. Five-year capital improvement plan, we got to put it in. It was all trips.
I'm sorry. This is the standard. This is not where it's at right now.
The standard was to help facilitate improvements.
This doesn't reflect what's currently the level of service standard. So the level of service as this level of service as it currently functions is different from the standard you see here. So the E allows a lot of flexibility. It allows you to add more capacity, or more volume onto that road without worrying about whether you're failing a C level.
You're right. It was where you have pre, let's say I have 1,000 homes. That trip is put in that calculation of what it can happen at the max. Is that right? Is that what you're saying?
That's right. So you have a design capacity.
You don't have the 1,000 homes, but you have the potential.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
That's right. So I've worked at a community before where we actually were coming to a failing, and we wouldn't be able to permit a new development because the road was an F-road, and their level of service was C. And the additional traffic we were going to be putting onto that road based on the new development that was going to be approved in our city was actually to cause the road to now be failing. And so we would not be able to issue that permit. That's the issue with concurrency. And so if all you're worried about is capacity and adding another lane to a road in order to accommodate new volume of traffic, you're going to end up with a point where you just can't add any more lanes. And so what do you do in lieu of that? You got to end up, look at other modes of transportation and other strategies to help alleviate that traffic. So if you, and that's why we keep pushing mixed-use type development and complete streets type development in here in our comprehensive plan. There are other things that you could look at as well, such as intersection improvements. Yes, roundabouts actually also help with through of traffic in many cases. So you look at other alternatives rather than looking at adding another lane as the first option. So you look at all the other options first. And what we're proposing in the comprehensive plan are a lot of strategies for us to look at, mixed-use development, complete streets type development, enhanced transit, enhanced bicycle and trail network, parallel to our roadway network, compact development as alternatives, rather than looking at, let's just add another lane to our roadways to accommodate a new development. So that's what we're really proposing in here. Now, we did not, we're not suggesting changing these level of service standards or taking them out for these arterials. We did suggest it. We tried to. We worked with the public works department, but they had a lot of concerns with that. They wanted this measure at least somewhere. You don't necessarily have to have in your comp plan. It could be in a code or some technical manual. The state legislature allows that. However, we're not changing this. But we did include several new policies that talk about complete streets. We originally only have one policy inside the current comp plan that talks about that. We've expanded that dramatically. Also, the transportation element is really very short, the current one. We've changed that to what's called the mobility element. I've given you a copy of that in here and expanded it and called it mobility element with, to address other modes of transportation, not just vehicle or traffic. So it talks about pedestrian connectivity, trails. That's the one that's titled Public Facilities, Goals, Objectives, and Policies. So it starts there with mobility element. If you recall, too, I gave you excerpts of some of the land use categories, the gateway, the downtown. Those have transportation-related policies in those as well. Because again, remember, we're, the first half of this plan is about place making, and that melds transportation and land use together. You'll see in these policies I just, under mobility, cross-reference back to those other land uses as well. You'll see that some... So the level of service standards for arterials and collectors, we're not recommending changing, but we are recommending a very expanded list of new policies to address alternative, alternate modes of transportation, not just roadway capacity. And to look at roadway capacity as a last resort. Look at other alternatives first before you just go ahead and plan for adding another lane. I really jumped here. I was going to go into the parks, currency facilities, and then go on to transportation. Unless you have another question, I'll keep going. Okay.
When we talk about mobility, do I have to turn this?
Yeah, turn on your speaker.
Okay. When we talk about mobility...
Speaker.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we all talk about charging stations for the future, or?
Interesting you ask. We don't have anything in the comp plan that talks about charging stations. However, that's something we certainly could add in there as an option. We do address automatic, automobiles that are going to be automatic in the future, and now we have to rethink how land use is going to be impacted by that. We talk about even golf carts. We talk about trails. We talk about on-street bicycle lanes.
But there's nothing specific on this empty policy, all the ones all underneath mobility.
Yeah, I don't recall that we actually put in our...
So you don't use the term charging stations?
I don't recall that.
If you'd remember, I brought that up six months ago, charging stations.
This is still a draft report based on what we gave to you, or planned back, we gave you back in May. We're still getting feedback from you and still adding into another, those ideas. So what I've given you here is based on the original that's made available to the public and to you back in May. So yes, we can, if that's missing from here, we certainly add it.
So it didn't incorporate the comments that the chairman and commissioner receivers and I made?
Correct. So a lot of the comments, we've been making a collection, a lot of comments you've been giving us for the past few workshops. We've not been adding as we've been going. We've just been keeping those as a list so that when we finish the workshops with you, we can go ahead and make that final draft.
I just, I just don't think that's something that we should postpone.
Okay. We can add that in. Actually, since we're on, well, unless you have another question, I guess I'll go on to the...
No, just a concern.
Okay. So going back to that second page of the slide where they have the list of concurrency-related facilities, the second red rectangle there, open space, parks. The current level of service for parks right now is eight acres per 1,000 residents. If you look on the next page, you'll see parks level of service, and there's a map there on the right side. That map, it identifies all the parks in green there that we calculated to address, all the parks in the city, whether they're city-owned or city-maintained, or county-owned or maintained. They're just public accessible parks that are included as part of the calculation to determine whether we're meeting level of service.
Is that eight acres determined by the state, or anything like that?
No. There is no, there's no standard.
Okay.
So each community can come up with their own standard.
Because with launches, it almost requires more parkland along the river.
We do have, I did give you at your last meeting, a, if you remember, the waterfront overlay policies. I think those policies might address additional, you know, making the Indian River Lagoon more accessible. And if there's a policy that addresses launches, maybe we could probably state something like that in there. But we do address, there are a lot of recreational-type policies inside that particular part of the element, of the comp plan, rather. So the parks level of service, right now it's eight acres per 1,000 persons. Right now, we have a population, or at the time, this was drafted, 47,000 plus. So we're required to have 380 acres, and we have currently 706. So we have, we're not going to come anywhere close to requiring to be put in new park space in the city. A lot of our parks are small parks that are very scattered everywhere, and the large parks, very large regional parks. And so we just didn't see that there was going to be an impetus to add more parks. And we have a lot of community or neighborhoods that are not very close to, or even a walking distance of a park, or even a pocket park. If you look on the graph in the bottom there on that page, you'll see level of service standards for parks, city of Titusville, 2018 through 2040. So this graph is supposed to illustrate that, you know, even as far into, out to 2040, we're not going to come close based on our population estimate of requiring to put in new park space. So we kind of, you know, discussing this with our consultant, we saw this as kind of a useless measure, a useless level of service. It's not going to get us anywhere. It just tells us we're meeting our standard. So different communities have different standards. They can go down to two acres per unit, per thousand, or however they want to do it. On the next page where it says new parks level of service, consultant recommended we adopt something a little different, or replace the level of service standard we have in there, or even add to it as one council member has suggested. That is based on proximity to residential. So for example, a small park should be located within a quarter-mile walk of a residential development. This would enable new parks and open space criteria to be adopted in the LDRs. Again, remember, the comprehensive plan is the umbrella. It's the policies that helps us figure out what kind of regulations we should adopt into the code, or what other programs we should be implementing to implement the comprehensive plan. In this case, if we had a measure like this, small, a small park within a quarter-mile of residential development, that would ask us to come up maybe with a regulation in our code that says, all right, so we have a new residential development going in. If it's not located within a quarter-mile walk of an existing park, then they should probably incorporate a park within their development. That's something that probably could be addressed in the regulations. We don't have anything like that right now. For existing residential development, it does not, it pretty much doesn't ask us, tell us that they're non-conforming now, they have an issue. It just says that that's something we should really strive for, is what this level of service standard is really saying.
I, so when Trevor brought this up a while ago, I actually thought that this was too strict of a standard. I felt like it was a burden upon developers. At the same time, it's creating a situation where when you do a new development, let's say that off of Grissom, that is going to require them to build a park. Same with the old Boeing property, or Nasa Causeway, and US1. It's going to require them to build a park. And I thought, you know, maybe in lieu, I mean, if the city is set on a quarter of a mile, I mean, I think it's a high standard, actually too high of a standard. One of the things that he did say was that a park can be passive. And so maybe what we could add in language is a park or a green space, or some type of passive green space, or honestly, I just don't see this, these areas being used. I mean, currently, I see some of our parks used, but the vast majority of the 800 acres, or what'd you got, 700 acres, not used as much.
Don't you think that this contributes to the aesthetics of the entire city?
It does, but I'm just saying, a park could be a swing set. A park could be any, it could be anything, and...
And I think it needs to be recreational.
We would need to define it. We have, this is not...
That's why I'm trying to say, maybe the language could be to add, I think it would be better to add in some type of green space, passive...
The phrase green space is very attractive.
I mean, whatever language that they prefer, but...
You know, I think that a major, that the public has really come to want to save the trees, to save this green space, to not put this asphalt over everything. I think green space probably would be a more appropriate term than actually a park. I mean, a green space...
Some communities do, too. They have a regional or a local park, and then they have a district park. And a district park could be defined as that large green space with a passive recreation trail or something. So you could have two different types of standards.
Right. It does not have to have any recreational elements in it. It could be a bench. It could be a walk-through path. It could be, I think it's the situation that people in the city want to see green.
We could explore that, that option.
Just like I said before, I thought it was a high burden. But anyway, Vice Chairman.
I guess initially, I think I would agree with you, Mr. Chairman. However, in light of the discussion at the council level, and others are wanting to move towards saving more trees, having, saving canopies from 30 to 50%, I see how this quarter of a mile walk to a park, et cetera, can be very consistent with that philosophy within a subdivision or within an industrial development, or whatever it might be. They're entirely consistent. And I think we need to keep that in mind when we're looking at this, as well as the ordinance, I believe, staff is starting to draft dealing with tree canopy and saving trees and things of that nature.
We are actually working on an ordinance, too, that we were asked to do about a year ago. It's been taking some time, to define open space. Because currently, that's an issue we've been having with some plan unit developments that have come through, requirements for open space, and what those really mean. So we have very bit of minimum criteria of what that is. So that's something we need to define. So we can...
All those could work together.
Yes. Yeah. That's all I had on level of service standard for parks. Yes. Yeah. That's all I had on level of service standard for parks. So, going back to transportation, unless you have another question, let's go on.
Let me ask you a question. I'm all for the, the parks, and we've got a couple that are not maintained, and the developer has long since gone, like Stewart Avenue. I think it's still considered a small park. We used to call it a vest park at Park. And Hickory Hills, they're not maintained. I guess the issue becomes within the staff, who's going to maintain it? I hear a lot of objection from public works. They're not going to maintain those things. So, we should set one policy that the city's going to maintain these parks if they need it. If not, if we have to depend on the developer, and it goes 20 years down the line, the city's going to assume responsibility for that park.
The, the idea is that if a park is going to be incorporated as part of a new development, new residential development, remember, this level of service standard is about residential, that the developer would create that park, and it would be turned over to an association that would be maintained by the community there. That's the idea. The city, as far as I understand, has not been willing to accept new land for new parks unless the city council is willing to incorporate that as part of their budget. So, that, that's just an increased cost to the city to create a new park. That's the idea so far. But we can certainly look at those alternatives.
Are you then saying that each development would be an HOA?
Well, if you have an apartment building, if you have a condo, if you have a new subdivision, most new subdivisions have to have an HOA because they're going to have common areas for stormwater or roads. So, yes.
So, you're saying that for residential development, single-family houses?
Well, if you have a, a single, single-family home that's going up on a platted lot, that's different. Well, this would be tied to as a new development, such as a new subdivision going in.
Right. So, but you're talking about two, two developments of single-family homes that have been abandoned by the developer?
Well, I don't...
Because they're full, right?
I don't know.
But they're not being maintained.
If the, uh, one park, I think it's still on the map, I think, in Indian River City.
This is too tiny.
But the Hickory Hills one specifically, specifically has been abandoned.
We can look into it. I'll investigate those, that part. He said it's on Hickory Hills. And then, well, I'll follow up with you after the meeting, Mr. Richardson.
Okay. I wanted to take a pause real quick and ask the board how they wanted to, I see that we, we had somebody from the public put a card in, and I think since it is a workshop, we wanted input. But I wanted to find out how you want to proceed with, I've seen workshops done many different ways, so...
Well, if we're talking about an item that they're interested in, well, they just raise their hand. Because if they wanted to talk about something that we're not talking about...
Right. I don't want to, yeah, I don't want to dismiss anybody. And then, yet I don't think, I've said before, the workshop's not as formal, but, so...
We can, I can take a break and ask, yeah, you can, however you want to format the workshop.
Yeah, I'm just saying, at this point in time, because I do want to include the audience, the public. And then, it might bring up some other things to discuss. So, you want to come up?
Bill?
No, I don't think so. I mean, it's, I would defer to council. If you wanted to record that, then I would...
At a minimum, we'll need his name and address for the record for each speaker.
I did fill one out. I'm Bill Klein, live here in Titusville at 3 Indian River Avenue. One of the things I see when some of these type regulations, possibly in the comprehensive plan, are developed by someone who doesn't use a facility, there seems to be a lack of understanding. Like, when you talk about parks level of service, eight acres per 1,000 persons, that could be a little bit of grass, it could be a playground, it could be a launch ramp. There's a lot of difference. One of the things I see, one of our major parks here in Titusville, which is about getting ready for a huge change, it's Parish Park on Titusville Causeway. On the weekend, you might see 200 people or cars there. You'll see windsurfers, jet skis, all kinds of action going on. Right now, they're getting ready to do a major project to limit those parking places to 69 spots. They're going to pave over most of the area, almost all the way to the waterline. Now, you see people, they'll come out there, they put up canopies, they bring out tables, chairs, and they sit at the water's edge. But when the pavement comes, that's $1.7 million worth of change, they're going to have to sit in the parking lot because it's not available. Now, what I think needs to be done in designing a good park system for a community is not look at somebody sitting in an office who doesn't go to the park to design it. You need people who are using it. See people who are actually there. Like, they had a big meeting when they were talking about how they're going to eliminate all these parking spaces. A lot of people came to talk and see, there were some windsurfer guys there who wanted to make some statements. Everybody walked away. The windsurfer guys came over to me just because I am interested. They said, they wouldn't walk along the waterfront. You had all these people come out sitting beside it, but they wouldn't walk it. So, what he did is he, we walked along. They were showing me that the new bike trail, because they didn't do anything about trying to stop erosion. Water, when it rains, runs off of that, is making gullies. It's eroding into the park. I started looking into this park. There's probably about 150 feet of land that's washed away since 1958, according to Laura Lee Thompson, who gave me a picture and told me that the land used, along that park, used to go out way, way from the shore. It's gone. They're not protecting it. Now, you, today, I walked along where there used to be sand. It's underwater. You look, like, along the park, there's sand and grass that's just eroding away and dropping in. Now, what I think we need to do, instead of just saying, oh, we're going to have eight acres for 1,000 people, and this represents so many acres, I think we really need to look at, what's the purpose of the park? Who's using the park? Let's write our standards according to the use and the desirability. Like, there's a lot that can be done in our parks. You know, I go over to Chainah Lakes. There's all kinds of soccer fields, baseball fields. It's a beautiful park. Now, one of the things that's not so hot over at Chainah Lakes is there's a beautiful walking path, but there's not a tree around it. In the summertime, if you want to walk along it, you're sweating before you get halfway down the road. And what I think we need to do is, let's look at the use and the desirability. Put in trees around walkways. Like, you can go over to West, let's see, I'm trying to remember the name of the park, but some of the parks that have some natural areas, some people have come in voluntarily and made paths through it. Like, I think it's Westover Park, Wusthof Park. At Wusthof Park, some people have opened up some pathways through the natural area. And like, people who live in the city who don't have time to go a long way off to some natural area, they can go to Wusthof Park. There's a beautiful walkway in the trees with lots of bushes around, birds around. Now, this is what I think we ought to do in our comprehensive plan, is let's say, these parks are going to be for baseball, soccer, football. These parks are going to be water parks. We're going to have windsurfers, jet skis, launch ramps. These parks, maybe some of the birds. Like, Titusville does have a big birding festival. A lot of people are interested in birds. Now, if we start landscaping around some of these waterways in our parks, like at Chainah Lakes, and get a little more water, waterways with shoreline plants, more trees around, you'll draw more birds. Right now, I've seen rosettes, boombills, limpkins, all kinds of other birds that come to that park. It's a great place to go to look for birds. Now, this is what I'd like to see in the comprehensive plan, is not eight acres for 1,000 people, and who cares what it looks like. Let's define the parks that we want, the facilities we want, and make it beautiful. That's all I have to say.
So, I wonder, I've heard you and Bill Klein about the Parish Park as well. And I actually use that park on a regular basis. I mean, I think we call it Redneck Riviera. But even I hate to see a change. I do. So, I'm a little bit, I'm worried as well. It does worry me because I do use that. And I've heard some of the comments about the usability with the, I've seen the bike path. I didn't even realize that was a bike path, by the way. I just thought they put an odd strip of land in there, not concrete, but...
It sort of looks like...
Yeah, yeah, it was odd. It was wide, but it was so very interesting. And I think, hopefully, you know, some of the, my understanding is DOT is doing this on their funds, and...
Yes.
And hopefully, we can have some input, the residents that have showed up. I can't say that I'm part of that, but, I mean, I do feel that way. Brad?
I think the county's implementing it. There is funding, I might understand, from DOT, especially because of the trail. And I know they've been in coordination with the, the refuge as well.
Yeah. So, hopefully, all right.
Michael Majak, 4420 Alpine Lane, Titusville. I think that our system, while functioning, is inherently broken. You guys look at the, the planning and, and the efforts that developers are attempting to make, yet the Environmental Commission is supposed to be looking at changes to the environment. Do you not think development modifies the environment? And do you not think that the Titusville Environmental Commission should have just as much review power on these plans to identify how it affects the environment that we all live in? Because when you take 88 acres and mow the whole thing down, fill it up, make it nice and level so the topography's easy to work with, you end up taking down trees that were years in the making, decades, generations, in cases like the one at Brookshire. The Environmental Commission isn't part of this parlay. So, one thing I can tell you from looking at the comprehensive plan, that every time we move a level of service down, we degrade it from a C to a D to an E. It gives staff more flexibility to cram more people and more cars and more stormwater and more sewage and more policemen and fire and rescue and schools into that same area. The idea of concurrency is one of balance. I don't want to live in an E-level environment. I want at least a C and preferably a B. If we're the city of nature and space, that Birding and Wildlife Festival, by the way, is the largest in the nation. It's, it's a phenomenon. The things that we have available to us here in Titusville and to those that come to visit us need to be celebrated and enhanced. We can't do that if we take our wetlands and buy land in Volusia County and take hours and fill them up. Just a few weeks ago, the city council approved the filling of wetlands up to 25 feet so that they could be in the level of critical concern. I don't know how this system broke, but that's against our own rules. It's against our own land development regulations. To develop with that intensity in the area of critical concern. I was here 15 years ago when that well field, well field two started to soak salt water, and we had to rest the wells more frequently or risk losing them entirely. Well, if we cover over 80 acres with concrete, we're not going to get the kind of stormwater that we want. So, one thing within stormwater development, we need to come up with a way of distributing the retention areas throughout the development, not have one big chunk and all the houses crammed up around it. We need to divide it out. We need to leave the trees in those retention areas. We need to not change the topology of the land, which is currently in our comp plan to not do. We're to live with the land. We don't do that yet. And I can go on and on. There's, there's, there's problems in many different areas. But the biggest thing is that we don't have any metrics for any of this. Metrics are important because they allow us to measure what's happening. And if you can't measure what's happening, then you don't know what's going on. And you end up with a result that may not be anywhere close to the idea that you had when you put down the task or the process or how we defined our, our comprehensive plan. We need to have a feedback mechanism so that we can understand and control how our city grows, so that we can leave those trees and we can leave a canopy behind. And maybe adding a park is just the thing to do as well. The problem that we have is that every developer comes in and they want to smack as many units in that area as possible. And that's exactly the opposite of low-intensity development. Not practicing low-intensity development is what got us to a failing Indian River Lagoon. It's not just Titusville's fault. It's all the city's fault. It's the county's fault. It's Indian River County and others. We have to find a way to live sustainably and allow the Indian River Lagoon to recover. We need to have a separate section in our comp plan specifically addressing the Indian River Lagoon, its criticality to our lifestyle here and our quality of life. We see the surge in housing and high-intensity development because our council and our staff think more and more people, put them in tighter and tighter spaces. And it saves us in that we don't have to run as much stormwater pipe, we don't have to run some of the other services that are necessary. There's an economy of scale, in other words. But there's no balance with the environment because we have nobody in the city looking out for the environment. You guys don't get the original tree survey that comes with the packets. In fact, your packets are stripped of a lot of data, including environmental data. And yet, you're making decisions for our city that alter our environment. You know, when you take down a 44-inch oak tree with a 72-foot canopy, it won't happen in my child's lifetime that that tree will be back. That tree could be 1,000 years old, a stalwart giant in the wood. These are the things that we need to save. We need to find a way to come back into balance so that it's not all to the developer's liking, and it's not all to the citizen's liking. But somewhere in between, there has to be a balance. And right now, we're not even watching it. It's just scooting by because we have no metrics to identify it, and we have no methodology for saying when we need to improve and when we don't. So, I would encourage you at least not consider going to traffic to a level E service as a, as a quality of life place. When people move here that are engineers and scientists, they want trails, they want the bike paths, they want the amenities that come with it. And you can get those by lowering the intensity of the development and integrating and building with the... with the lay of the land. I think that's what the people of Titusville want. That's what I've heard on the Environmental Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Paul?
Hello. My name is Paul Slub and I've lived around here about fifty years. My perspective is not so much to give you specifics, directions or anything like that. I like a lot of what I've heard. I appreciate all your work and whatnot. But keeping your vision of the future plan, how the wild areas around here tie into, you know, how the surrounding Titusville and also the wild areas within the limits, city limits. For instance, yesterday, unfortunately, just on the end of Singleton where it comes out to four oh five, I see a dead bobcat right there. It got hit probably yesterday morning before light, you know. But these things can continue, you know, the populations can get through a lot. One thing, my perspective, I've done a lot of trail guiding for years out at the Enchanted Forest. And so, people come out there and you can see like twenty years of logbooks because people sign in when they, at the hike desk, they sign in as they visit. And people would visit from all over the world, countries all over the world, as well as states all over here in the United States and other parts of Florida. And they have rave reviews of what they see. I've even had somebody say something like they went through, I don't know how many countries that they had been on a sort of a world tour, and they said this was the best place that they enjoyed the most. And, you know, so I want the vision of the future to tie in with other entities like the Fish and Wildlife, you know, and whatnot, whatever information and wisdom they have, you know, to help keep these things around, you know. And I'm really for a vibrant, especially downtown and whatnot, you know. And I know everybody needs places to live, houses need to be built. But a lot of these animals and whatnot, as resilient as they can be, get divided up into island populations, you know, and that includes bobcats. If you make neighborhoods just where it's just, you know, no trees, totally a block zone, you know, totally on wildlife friendly, and I'm not talking about inviting raccoons into your trash cans and everything, but, you know, just as much as you can incorporate these wild lands and keep them in mind even as you're making decisions of where to pave and whatnot, you know, know that this is in your periphery and very important, very important, because we can keep a lot of these things on into the future and it affects the quality of life at every level, the parks and stuff, but also, you know, the wild lands and keeping these things around just as a general part, but important part of your vision. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Anybody else? Okay. All right. I appreciate everybody getting up here. It's, I'm in agreement, I mean, something, something that I've seen, I've watched arguments change to where we have higher intensities, it's supposed to save the environment, and I've never quite got that argument, but. So, one of the things that our objectives is to do is to guide us to what we want as a community. And so, this is an opportunity for the public to get involved and speak to council, speak to this board, speak to staff, say, this is what we want. I know that I've been vocal for many years with staff and I say the same thing. If I wanted to live in Orlando, I would live in Orlando. And if you notice, people from Orlando are now moving over here. And I want, you know, a place where I'm not stuck in traffic, I'm not looking at skyscrapers, I'm not, I work in Melbourne, I don't want to live in Melbourne. So, Titusville's been my home for many years, not as many as most of you. I mean, I'm relatively nooby, but twenty-five years, I think, and that's not even touching some of you. But this is an important part of the vision, and so I encourage you guys to tell your friends, tell your neighbors. Because what happens is even these community meetings where staff solicits input, people don't show up like we need them to. And for me, I know that, it's not that I hate development. I know that I have gotten a reputation from developers, I've heard from developers. It's not that I hate it because I don't. I just, I know my vision for Titusville, and sometimes it doesn't align to the city. And so, I'll stop so we can get back on the track. And thank you.
Well, just to answer some of the comments that were made, just so everybody knows, at your next and your last workshop, which is scheduled, I believe, November sixth at 5:00 PM, the next topic is tree preservation, land clearing, cluster development, open space again, so we'll talk about this again, and wetlands. So, the policies that are in the comp plan that addresses those topics will be talked about again at the next meeting.
When are we gonna, when are we gonna talk about the Indian River Lagoon? Because it was supposed to be a part of the last segment and it's listed in this segment. I think we almost need to spend a session on the Indian River Lagoon.
Well, the Indian River Lagoon is a broad topic. So, throughout this whole thing, I've been addressing different parts and aspects related to it, such as recreation, such as development on there, such as what I'll talk about, low-impact development, and even some environmental policies, which I'll talk about the next one, because there are some environmental policies that are related to the Indian River Lagoon. So, it's kind of been spread out because it's such a broad topic. So, I haven't looked dedicated or put it on here as one topic only.
Well, the main thing, I said my first meeting on November the seventh or eighth last year, this is a 2040 plan. And I, when I read it then, I saw nothing new, innovative, that added any additional protections for the Indian River Lagoon within the proposed comprehensive plan. And I don't, I personally don't feel as though we are doing our job unless we come forward with some additional protections of the Indian River Lagoon. We all know what the last twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years have brought us to, and we need to do something about it. In response to the five or six strategies I recommended, which I received comments, everybody was always looking to the county or somebody else. I feel, and this, I'm one person, we have a responsibility to the citizens of Titusville to try to do something to improve the water quality, what's dumping into the Indian River Lagoon and the like. And I think we need to spend a lot of time on that as such.
We do have one strategy in there that talks about adhering to the B map, which our current comprehensive plan does not even talk about right now. And that was something that was adopted, the Base Management Action Plan, that was adopted prior, after subsequent to last year, the evaluation appraisal report amendments that we did back in 2010. And so, we've been implementing that, that Basin Management Action Plan and the strategies in there that have been recommended. I would have to ask, I don't know where we are as far as implementation at this stage. It's something I could probably come back to you with some information. But in the new draft plan, we've actually made mention of it in here and as a policy for us to follow. So, that's something that's new in here. I can, now, I can, I didn't go into more detail about it other than to say that that's what we, that is a policy that we want to adhere to. So, if you'd like, I can bring back information as far as the status of that.
I, for one, would like to hear more, more about that. And then I looked at the capital improvements, which, and I see nothing money-wise that's allocated to address the issues. I know that's not your department's or.
No, I understand. We can, we'll see what we find out.
I mean, we have to be serious about this rather than saying, well, let the county take care of it with X, Y, Z. I mean, if part of the problem is all these discharges that are going and being dumped in directly into the Indian River Lagoon, which there are many, need to be funded, let's figure out a plan to try to correct some of those. Because I don't see anything.
I think what we could took a look at is maybe to implement one of the sections or elements, a strategy that could probably add it in there. And I think you did mention, you did make recommendations on that a few months ago. So, we could took a look back at that to see what we can add and if add in here. Again, I didn't, I only gave you right now the version of this plan that was, we showed to you at the ear transmittal, or I'm sorry, the transmittal hearing that was scheduled back in May. So, we've been trying to just collect all of your comments together and we'll take, we'll take it all together and see if we can add it in here and see, and then give you a draft of that in a later time. As far as the schedule of improvements, though, I don't know what I can resolve in that. I'll have to get back to you and see, discuss it with the other departments and see what could be put in there. We are, every year, we do have to adopt or amend our capital improvements, I'm sorry, our schedule of capital improvements as part of our capital improvements element of our comprehensive plan. That's a state requirement. So, our budget has been adopted, our capital improvements budget has been adopted, our capital improvements program, it's a five-year program, has been adopted. Now, we gotta take that, that, and those, those elements in there or those facilities that are concurrency-related and put that into our capital improvements element of our plan, our comprehensive plan now. And now, I'm throwing out a lot to you. And then we have to take all those infrastructure that are, impact our level of service standards for, that FDOT might have in their budget or any other agency and put that inside our schedule as well. It's just something to cover, that shows, we have to adopt every year, that shows that we are making the improvements necessary to meet our level of service standards for concurrency-related facilities. Again, that's water, sewer, transportation and so on. So, you're gonna see that soon, actually, an update to that. And that's an opportunity to make, at that time, too, a comment about more detail, I think is what you're asking for.
Part of, I don't see a plan, an action plan. If that involves additional funding and convincing the council and the public that we need additional funding for a stormwater utility, then someone needs to be bold and try to do some of those things. I mean, what I see on the capital improvements is drainage improvements, $200,000. And I see cure-in-place pipeline or $350,000. That's the only thing for stormwater improvements, and it does not address any of what you and I are talking about.
Right. I understand. There may be improvements that they have contemplated, those departments that are responsible for it contemplated, that are long-term, beyond five years. You know, as part of your comprehensive plan, you can make a schedule in there that's longer than just the minimum five years as required by statute. So, that's something, so let's say they don't anticipate funding within the next five years. They're just not going to put it on the schedule yet. So, maybe that's something we can.
Well, in numerous suggestions I had, I put a timeline. Within two years, the stormwater, the Public Works Department would make a recommendation on X. Within two years, Water Resources would make a recommendation X. And nobody seems to like a deadline, but you gotta have some deadline, otherwise it always gets put off.
Yeah, you'd have to get on speaker.
My question, since I haven't been able to see the draft, I'm really at a loss.
The draft is available online, Titusville tomorrow.
Not on Titusville.com?
Titusvilletomorrow.com, you'll be able to find the conference. It's on the city's website.
All right. One of the things that I was concerned about was us going to, away from fossil fuels and fossil fuel consumption. And so, one of the things I think that needs to be included now is the migration path to solar energy, photovoltaic and photo, or solar thermal for hot water. The Environmental Commission did a study that indicated that the city could save over $1.2 million if they would, over a period of twenty years, if they would convert this building to solar panels on the roof, just doing that. And when we started looking at all of the facilities, particularly the water facilities, water treatment plants, they have big flat buildings, they have rooftops that are accessible, they could actually be generating more power than they would consume, which could then feed back into the city's coffers as well. So, moving towards solar also provides electricity backup during hurricanes. You don't have to have gas or generator, or you can use solar and solar battery. And the buy-down, it's, you have to think of it more as in buying down your future costs, because once the local loan is paid for for having purchased that, the power that it regenerates continues well after the payment. So, there, it actually adds more money back to the coffers, to the general fund if we do this. So, it needs to be in the plan.
I can answer that. In the current comprehensive plan, we do have green building standards in there right now. What we decided to do is expand it a little bit and even spread it out into other parts of the plan, in the new plan. And we actually are going forward with a, we just received back a response on an application to the Florida Green Building Coalition. So, we've been working internally to come up with kind of, get the city certified in some ways with a strategic plan as far as our buildings and.
But we can take that a step further. Think of the individual homes going in. Every single one of them should have solar panels on their roof right now.
Mr. Majak, let me finish, because that's just one step. Now, the comp plan does go on further to talk about communities and the rest of the city as well. So, those are additional strategies we can certainly look at. So, I think, I think what Mr. Majak's asking for is contemplated already expressed in various different parts of the new comprehensive plan. As far as the current comprehensive plan, it's kind of limited, but there is a section that talks about it, yes.
A member's panel.
Going back to concurrency, and I'd like to echo Vice Chair Seaver's comments, that when we look at all of these areas that the Indian River Lagoon needs to be incorporated into water, sewer, stormwater, solid waste, schools, parks and mobility, and that that just needs to be a component.
I'm sorry, a separate component is what you're asking?
No, it needs to be included with, when we're considering that the Indian River Lagoon is so critical to each one of those seven, that it just can't be ignored.
So, okay, I see what you're saying. So, we could probably add a policy that talks about the Indian River Lagoon in relation to those.
Yes, within, yes. And isn't that what Vice Chair is asking for? He wants a separate total, but I think it does not need to be removed. I think it needs to be central to each one of these components.
Okay. We could work on something like that.
I wanted to go back to the solar and green back for men. So, many, many years ago, I was on the Garden Milk Commission, and many, many years ago, there was a tornado in this small town in Kansas, Greensburg. I used to visit this place on a yearly basis and because they were, Hollywood came to town and they were changing to green, and I went and interviewed these people and they said, it's horrible, absolutely horrible. We can't get anything built. We can't do this, we can't do that. So, at the same time, here in Titusville is when lead buildings started popping up. I thought, great. So, many years ago, I said, I suggested to staff, pre, pre you, there should be some incentives. Lead buildings going to solar, going, you know, changing to alternate fuels or energy is expensive and it is. And the, it is, uh, I think that there should be some incentives by, or credits, or we, we should incentivize it in other methods. We can put it as a policy and a goal, obviously, but I think that we need to come back and put our money where our mouth is. If we believe in what we're putting on our policies and our comp plan, we should back it up with, um, some incentives to say, hey, if you do this, you'll get an extra credit of this, or, um, you know, barring it being in, you know, the, um, environmentally sensitive areas, you can, you know, you gain some additional, uh, buffers, you know, expansions. I'm just saying that there, there are other ways to incentivize using these things that they can get back without it really being the true cost to the city. And we've never done that, but I think that it's an opportunity to encourage it, so. But Frank, going back to Greensburg, I mean, they've really tried. They gave it the college try, but, um, they said that it was next to impossible to rebuild. And, um, so when I say the town was wiped out, it looked like somebody took a, I mean, it, it was wiped out. It was to the street. And, uh, so we used to make our, we used to go visit. We'd go through there once in a while and. But it is difficult to do it. If, if we could maybe implement something, I think maybe, uh, we used to have, remember the Green Hotel that he was trying to be built here?
Oh, yes.
Um, that was one of the things. That was at that time, I think, too. So, okay. I will get back on course here.
So the next part here is about, uh, transportation. So that's transportation level service. So I'm just gonna go into, into that. So going back to your presentation here and where I left off, where it talks about new parks level of service, just underneath that is another slide there called, how wide is wide enough? So that goes back to what I was saying at the beginning of the meeting about, um, adding additional lanes, adding additional capacity design on roadways. So there's only so far you can go with it. It's basically what the image is kind of illustrating. So a lot of communities are trying to find a way to, um, come up with new policies and strategies that address other alternatives to accommodate new growth that's gonna happen to come into your city. And where's all that traffic gonna go? Can you convert that traffic into something else and other kinds of modes of transportation, giving people options? And now I'm on the next page and it's titled Dangerous by Design. I mentioned this to you once before at another meeting. The Smart Growth America is an organization that published, uh, every couple of years, every so many years, a report called Dangerous by Design. And they, um, the most recent one looked at all the metropolitan statistical areas of this, of the country. And metropolitan, MSAs are those areas that are include large city and surrounding counties where people live and work and transfer back and forth. So an MSA, our MSA is, is Melbourne, um, entire Brevard County, Titusville. That's one, that's considered to be one MSA. Another one is Orlando and the surrounding counties around it. So they looked at the number of accidents, pedestrian deaths, uh, pedestrian deaths on roadways in these different MSAs around the country, and they looked at the rate basically and based on population. And the top 10, I believe, six or seven of them, or five of them, I believe, are in the state of Florida. And what that means is that we design our roads in our communities in a, in a ways that makes it very dangerous for pedestrians and bicyclists. And so the more we continue to widen our roads, the larger it is for someone to cross it, and therefore make it more dangerous for someone to be able to use that road. So it's only available and designed for vehicle or traffic. And so if you could design your communities that way, your, that's what you're gonna end up with, a very auto-dependent kind of community. And so this is true really of the Sunbelt communities, Sunbelt states, rather, you know. The older states have much older designed cities in the Northeast. California, Southwest, Southeast are, were built after, primarily after the 1950s, when roads were being built, were becoming more auto-dependent. That's basically the crux of this. Uh, what I can say is that Melbourne is number, our statistical, uh, area is number three. Melbourne is number one, I'm sorry, Orlando area is number one, and Deltona, Daytona Beach, Ormond Beach is number two. So Titusville is part of the MSA that's number three ranked nationwide as most dangerous by design. This has quite, been quite embarrassing for FDOT. I know when this first came out several years ago, they really objected to it because they spent a lot of money and effort trying to make their roads and, uh, or say, you know, design the roads as safe as possible. But I think what it was, what we found out was that there's really not a good relationship between the local communities who address land use and the state agencies that are transportation agencies that address roadways. And they kind of work in silos. And so what, um, FDOT did, and I'll show you in another presentation, was create those context classifications based on, to help implement their new complete streets policy statewide. And I addressed that before in your net, your last workshop. I showed you the context classifications, those little subdivision classifications of how the roadway segments will be classified over time. I'll show it to you again here. And that's to help them, uh, with their future planning and how their roadway segments are gonna be redesigned or redeveloped in the future. And if a local community has a good plan in place, especially good urban design standards in place, they will take that into consideration of how those roadway segments in that community are classified. So that's a huge implication of how roadways in our side of our city will be redesigned long-term. And we have a lot of FDOT roads in our city. What we did in our comprehensive plan and the draft plan on the slide on the bottom there is, our approach was to expand options. We shifted the transportation system emphasis from just roadway capacity to, so that more modes are viable and desirable choices. We really have put in a lot of information there of policies that address mixed use development and higher densities in key nodes. That's really key. We gotta really identify where those key nodes are. And that's what we think we did with the draft future land use and the draft, uh, comprehensive plan policies. But to implement that really comes down to the urban design code, which is the next phase if that gets started, and coming up with a good regulatory plan to identify where appropriate high density would be. Connecting those nodes with transit, improving walking conditions throughout the city. We recently completed a pedestrian and trail plan. I, I would see that as part one. It was just a really preliminary, uh, plan that we did last, or earlier this year with Kimberly Horn and Associates to identify where we can make connections in our side of our city, especially as it relates to the three new regional trails coming to our city. And how do we connect our trail networks or our sidewalks and our bicycle, um, lanes to that overall regional network? Creating a network of cycling routes, I just addressed that. Expanding local street connections as redevelopment occurs. So as redevelopment occurs, how do we get that new development or redevelopment connected to the adjacent land uses? That's key as well. On the next slide, transportation level of service. Again, we've renamed the transportation element to mobility. We made no change to the level of service standard that's currently in place now for arterials and collectors, which is E. We just haven't recommended a change to it, but we certainly could. We could eliminate it or make it more stringent. Making it more stringent gives you less flexibility. Eliminating it could have implications as well, so. Uh, we added new multimodal policies. So the word multimodal is throughout this element. Added more complete street policies. We've really expanded on that. Added block perimeter policies. That's in the downtown land use category. What that means is, uh, some communities will have a standard where you have a mile, square mile, and you want to maintain 50 block intersections there. What that means, you have an old block pattern, you have, you know, 200 feet on each side of the block. That's a great development pattern, especially trying to create an urban development. Urban core, really. And we have that already platted inside our urban core. What this policy is saying, let's try to maintain that right now. In other words, that's a policy you could use to help prevent, uh, a lot of vacating of right-of-way in those areas and creating super blocks. Added more access management policies. So we have a strategy in there that asks us to look at access management. That's a real key component. So instead of every single small lot or parcel along an arterial having their own driveway and no connection to each, to each other, now what you're doing, let's say, for example, on one piece of, segment of a arterial, you've got a, every fast food restaurant along there and each one has their own driveway going onto our, onto that road. Well, you're dumping a lot of traffic onto that road and fast food restaurants do generate a lot of traffic. But if it's part of a, a larger development, where it doesn't have to have its own dedicated right-of-way or driveway right onto a right-of-way, yeah, now you're, you're creating a shared driveway. And so that is, that creates an environment that's more pedestrian friendly because now you're, you're eliminating those conflicts where pedestrians have to cross numerous driveways. That's going back to creating a, a community that's, that's not dangerous by design. We did not include level of service standards or new proposed level of service standards for sidewalks, bicycle lanes and transit. That's just transit, you can't, you're not even allowed to, state statute. Bicycles, it's hard to create a level of service standard for bicycle networks and even for sidewalks. I mean, some communities, engineers have looked at, a level of service standard is great if you have a sidewalk this wide. And it can, has a capacity for this number of people. Well, it doesn't mean anything if you don't have the adjacent appropriate land uses next to it and buildings next to it. So it, we didn't propose hard number level of service standards for bicycles and for pedestrian or for sidewalks. The next slide on the bottom there, revised plan, links land use and mobility. Like I said, the first half of the plan is all about place making, land use and transportation. It integrates place making policies. And then the second half is all about infrastructure. So that's it I have on this particular presentation. I have another one here that was given to me that I, but I'm not gonna go through all of it. I just wanna go through highlights.
I think I have a question for you.
Yeah.
In regard to mobility and this, uh, this dangerous by design, I don't think it tells the whole truth, considering Palm Bay, Melbourne. I think the Titusville population is growing much faster than the other areas in the county. And, um, I think, I'm not suggesting anything, but we've gotta look at that. And, um, you know, levels of handicap parking, because we've got an extreme amount of people like me that are disabled. And handicap parking is not available. Sometimes, I'll just tell you, I live within one, one mile from the Publix Colonial Coast. And when I go by there, I can't find any parking, so I drive to Port St. John for my groceries. You know, so we've gotta consider that Titusville is growing fast. And as grain goes, so goes disabilities. And we've gotta think about that. I'll be happy to work with you on that.
Okay. Yeah, we could certainly come up with a policy that, or a statement that addresses that. Absolutely.
Vice Chairman.
On the, your picture here, how wide is wide enough? With the young lady standing there, looking at the, I guess, going across. It reminded me of stopping at the intersection of Harrison Street and US-1 and looking north in front of Titus Landing and the grass strip along the road there because the sidewalk is up and around. And I, I have never seen anybody using that sidewalk, but on at least two occasions, I've seen people walking on the grass all the way from Harrison Street to where they can pick up the sidewalk there at the entrance to the mall. Whether it's DOT or the city of Titusville, that issue needs to be addressed because people are going to walk straight down the sidewalk and it should be there. And I, I, I know there was an excuse or reason or whatever, and it was approved. But I think that's a mistake. I said it earlier, but people are in fact using, walking the grass along US-1. This is a practical matter.
There's already been a fatality there.
So we have somebody who wanted to say something?
Of course.
Thank you.
I'm Marla S. Breckel and I live at 3 Indian River Avenue in Titusville. My pet peeve is crosswalks. Having a mobility problem, I'm not real fast at playing Frogger. I think that's what you call it when you're trying to cross a street when there's no crosswalks. The first thing I noticed is all those lovely new bus stops on Hopkins. If you're on the opposite side of the street from the bus stop, you might have to walk four blocks or pass two other bus stops to find a crosswalk or just walk a jaywalk. I think those high school kids that get out of Titusville High, they're the, and, um, a lot of them cross Hopkins to head, to walk home. They're walking, there's no crosswalks anyplace there for those kids. I see them, I go to the library a lot. I see those kids. There's not a single crosswalk anywhere near the high school. Then the people that, um, that walk the bridge on both sides of the brick, bridge, the people will walk over the bridge, cross the street and walk back over the bridge. No crosswalk, except there's one down at US-1. If you could walk all the way down to US-1 and come back and cross the road and come back and go up the bridge. But people don't do that. So I think when people decide where crosswalks are, they first ought to sit around and look and see where people actually cross. We travel a lot in cities and use the public transportation in cities. And usually we try to find a place where there's a crosswalk. Sometimes they've done something really stupid like we do. But it, I think it should be paid attention to.
Thank you. Mr. Klein?
I just wanted to add to the discussion on crosswalks. Not long, well, maybe it was over a year ago now, man on a motorcycle was killed, uh, at Sandpoint Park entrance, right where the crosswalk would have been. I, we've been trying to get a crosswalk over there for maybe since 2012. When I called up in the past, I was told that DOT and also Titusville doesn't want to slow down traffic coming off the bridge. And that's why they can't put a crosswalk there. After the man was killed, I took a picture of him in the road with the police around him, his motorcycle still under the car. And I contacted him. I said, this is where I've been asking for your crosswalk. I also sent him pictures of women pushing strollers across the road there, wheelchairs going across the road there. And I said, this is a dangerous place. It needs a crosswalk. There's already been one man killed here. The answer was, that doesn't count because he was on a motorcycle and he's not a pedestrian. I've then sent him a letter back and thanked him for it. I said, I am keeping these pictures and when a pedestrian is killed, I will send these pictures to their survivors and let them know who to sue. And these are the letters that I have from you all, so I know the names. I think we need a crosswalk at all dangerous intersections. That's my addition. Thank you.
Thank you. Did, um, just so that I'm on, if, um, your board is interested in taking a break. I, I mean, I'm good, but I just don't wanna go too long if you would like to take a break.
We're, we're gonna discuss next.
How much longer?
Yeah.
Just find out how much longer he has.
I don't have much longer to go.
What is that? What is how much?
Well, I have, I was just gonna go through just a few slides of this presentation. I wasn't gonna go through it all. The rest of it's for you to review.
I was gonna say thank you for the Form Based Code.
Yeah.
This is really what I'm kinda needing, you know, to dive in to maybe understand. You even got pictures, so. But hopefully this will help me get a better idea of it.
Okay. This was, this was a, a presentation that I, um, one presentation that I listened to at a workshop on Form Based Code. The Form Based Code Institute has a, three workshops that they have around the country that whenever someone is able to sponsor, they have a. someone is able to sponsor, 101 class, 201, 301 night, and you complete it, you get this certification that you've, now you understand what, how to draft one and implement a form-based code. And you can call it what you want. Basically, it's just another way of doing zoning. Well, this is one particular presentation I thought was really informative. It was by a gentleman by the name of Billy Hadaway. He's a PE, an engineer. He used to be, right now, he's the Transportation Director of the City of Orlando, and he was actually the District One Secretary for FDOT several years ago. And what I understand, he was very involved in, in creating the content, or the complete streets policy that FDOT now has and the context-sensitive policies that they are using right now to help identify, classify each of their segments of their roadways. So again, on the first slide here, you see, he's also talked about the Dangerous by Design report. Again, that report is very superficial. I mean, it does not get into real details on demographics or anything like that. The next slide I just want to show you real quick is on, I think it's the third page, and it just, it's titled Development, Land Development Patterns. So it's two pages in. And you'll see the two slides there. One is a development patterns, got lines in there in blue and green and red. And on the bottom slide, you'll see an aerial of a subdivision. And that's on, that's page three of the, of the presentation here. So what this is really illustrating is that, look at the circulation pattern in these two different types of development patterns. So you have on the slide on the front, on the top here, it's a sprawl on the north side of that main road. And you can see it's only got dead-end streets, cul-de-sacs, things like that. They don't really connect to each other. Everybody has to be dumped out on the road to get to the next piece of property. Whereas the traditional town, which is illustrated on this bottom half of that roadway, you can see the connection. Everybody can move back and forth without having to get onto that arterial. So it almost makes the arterial useless. You only need it to get from town to town. That's the idea. And then you look at the aerial here, he's got on the bottom. This is, this is somewhere, an area in Orange County. To get from A to B, you got to drive seven miles, even though A and B are probably only a few, a few yards away from each other. That's the, that is a classic sprawl pattern. This is what you're trying to get away from with the new comp plan policies that we're trying to, we're recommending. Now, even our current comp plan addresses sprawl, but doesn't really get very specific. It just says you shouldn't do sprawl. And that's kind of hard to interpret. The next slide, it's several pages in. And if you keep flipping through, you'll see a slide there called Vision Zero Cities, and it's got the map of the United States in blue on the bottom there. Probably eight pages in. On the bottom page, you'll see a map of the United States in blue and Vision Zero Cities.
How many pages in?
About eight pages.
Oh.
Nope.
The top of it, the top of that page says, "Orange Magnolia Avenue, One Way Conversion Study." On the bottom, you'll see that map of the United States. She got it.
Got it.
So I just wanted to point out that the trend right now with FDOT is to, or a lot of state agencies, Department of Transportation agencies, is to adopt a policy called Vision Zero. And then they're trying, the idea is to get many communities as possible to adopt this policy as well. Now, our TPO, our local TPO, Transportation Planning Organization, recently had a big workshop on this, trying to get everybody committed on this effort about Vision Zero. What this is really about is just rethinking how our, our roads are designed and try to reduce pedestrian deaths to zero by designing, education, and the like. And I'll, I'll just read on the next page. Vision Zero goals are: Adopt a safe system approach in roadway design, operation, and maintenance. Increase everyone's understanding of the leading causes of crush, crash, crashes resulting in fatalities and serious injuries, and so on. Supporting law enforcement, demonstrating, by supporting law enforcement efforts to eliminate behaviors leading to fatal and serious injury, crashes. Demonstrate continuous progress towards Vision Zero. So now it's about metrics, really getting into data. Improve access and travel time to Level One trauma centers. Prioritize investments and programs in communities of concern. So FDOT is going to be really focused on where fatalities are and really focusing the resources in those areas. On the next page, you'll see another slide there called Citywide Crash Data on the top. That's Orlando. I'm really going to focus on the image on the bottom, and it's got Importance of Network. And again, I just want, this is just to illustrate why block patterns are important and why traditional type development patterns are important with connectivity between the different land uses. So on that page, you'll see 500 trips are being jumped, dumped onto that one road out of that block. On the next page, you'll see Importance of Network again. And if you keep flipping those pages, you'll see, as you keep adding more connections to, out of the block, you're distributing your vehicular trips out of that development. So you'll see, even if you add, if you have a cul-de-sac, you're still dumping 500 trips onto that road. If you connect that cul-de-sac to the road that's internal to that block, you're still, and you only have one way out onto the arterial, you're still dumping 500 trips onto that road. So you can design it how you want internally. Still going to dump a lot of traps on that road. But the next page, you'll see the added additional connection to, out of that block, you're splitting that distribution of trips and so on. And the point of this illustration is that, by the, by Mr. Hadaway, was that creating a block perimeter, making blocks a walkable size, creates a, a network, a pedestrian network, creates a good interconnected community. And this is the idea of retrofitting suburbia, in other words. The next page is, I'm, I'm not going to go into, but I'll leave it for you to explore. That just goes back, he has some more descriptions on the context classifications that I described you at your last workshop. And then, as you go further into it, you'll see an example there called Creating a True Multiway Boulevard. And he's got renderings in there of what you can do to try and create a major four-lane wide highway with a median between it that's got strip centers on both sides into a boulevard. That's a long-term strategy that would, the illustrations he's got in there would require rethinking how roads are created and designed, how roads are, access management, rethinking urban design standards of the adjacent properties, land use. And all of that, and in order to get to that kind of goal, really requires policies as part of your comp plan to start with. So I just want to leave that for you. I did, again, I didn't want to go through all of that in detail. And then after this, the last thing, I'll just briefly describe the low-impact development examples we have in our downtown right now. So I gave you another handout. These are just excerpts from the Downtown Code Urban Design Manual. And if you look through that, you'll see some examples of low-impact development that we encourage for new development inside our downtown.
On page two, I see examples of pervious pavement.
Correct.
Where we tried to do that in the 80s, was it Dwight? Pervious pavement?
Yes.
And you weren't here that night. Peggy said she wasn't aware of it. And I think we've got to start that again.
Well, again, like I mentioned earlier, we do have a draft that we're working on based on council's recommend, request to come up with expanding our, we have a credit if you put in pervious pavement on your development for stormwater treatment. So that'll come to you soon. But that's just a quick win. We're going to expand that requirement or that ability to use it in our, our area critical concern to the rest of the city. But what I want to show you here is that, that idea could be expanded on in many other ways. So we have that currently in our downtown. We encourage it when someone asks for flexibility from the code. I have not yet experienced anyone in our downtown utilizing this yet. This could be made requirement in some way. Right now, it's, it's stated in our comprehensive plan that we have to come up with some standards related to this. So this will come back to you anyway, because that policy's in our, our current comp plan. That's all I had tonight. I didn't, it's a lot of information. I'll try and answer any more questions you have.
I have one question for you. It's not directly relating to this, but in a way it is. We got a invitation by email, I think it was from you or maybe Lori that sent it to us, about a seminar, aging.
Yes.
Is that next week or something like that? And do we have to provide?
Yes. If you would like to be on the list, there's still, that came from the American Planning Association's local section, the Atlantic Coast section here. And I helped organize that. That's an event, we have two speakers that are going to come and talk about traditional neighborhood development and aging in place. Laura Cantwell with AARP Florida will come and talk about that and about missing metal housing on October 23rd, and that'll be held over at the Holiday Inn here.
On Kellen Hauser Boulevard?
Mm-hmm. And if you'd like, we, I can add you to the list.
Add me.
Okay.
I'll be there.
I do have to just warn you all, if you are multiple board members attending the event, you are allowed to go. We're posting that there may be multiple members there, but it is not a formal meeting, and it's not going to be open, something that we're keeping minutes of. So please refrain from having any conversations with each other about any topic that may come before you, before a vote. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Looks like we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So let's, so let's open this to the public. Is there anything that anybody would like to come up and say? All right, public. I'm kind of just running this, I know it's, all right, so is there anything else you'd like to report?
No, sir. You just have one more workshop next on November 6th, and we'll, we'll ask you for any further direction after that.
Okay. Chelsea?
No further report.
Okay. Mary Richardson?
No.
Mary Spadell?
No, sir.
Vice Chairman Severs?
No, sir.
All right, and I have nothing, so we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the form-based, really, I was looking it up online and I get, maybe it's a little harder.